That I used for many years here in the Wausau District. So that everybody can hear me way in the back. I know with the speaker system, if you can't pick up with the audio to the camera, let us know and we'll pick that mic up and bring it over here. With that, it is five o'clock on Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and I am calling the regular Wausau School District Board of Education meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Sarah Brock, here. Charles Berger.
Here.
John Creacher.
Here.
Nick Kersherr. Pat McKee. Jennifer Doley. Corey Sellers.
Here.
Lance Tral.
Here.
Jim Boucher.
Here. Thank you very much. Let's stand and say our pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. And at this time, we have a resolution of commendation for J.T. Micklick. I am seeking a motion to approve J.T. Micklick to receive the resolution of commendation.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let me take this moment. We'll come over on this side. Very proud of you, Jeffrey. Jeffrey is a sophomore at Wausau East High School and was nominated by Glenn Peters for the resolution of commendation. He is being recognized for his outstanding dedication and contributions to the Wausau East Auditorium lighting team. Jeffrey has devoted countless hours to ensure each performance was supported with professional, effective, and artistic lighting design. His hard work and commitment have not gone unnoticed. With that, Jeffrey, thank you very much for your work. Okay, agenda item number six, excellence in action. And our first speaker is going to be Horace Mann Middle School. Dr. Phillips.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Phillips. Thank you very much for being here, Dr. Phillips, and sharing with us what's going on.
Yes, so I will be short and sweet on this one. There are not many ways that our schools get graded. One of those ways is the school report card. And in my time here, I've been very proud of how Horace Mann has done with our school report card. So I wanted to just put those up on the screen from the last few years and then share some of the reasons how we get there. You'll also see that tomorrow is the public announcement, so I cannot share how we did last year. But I probably would not be reporting this tonight if we went down. So, how? Very, very simple. I was a former math teacher, love math, right? So I made this equation. And I believe this is how our staff and students feel about this building as well. It's attendance and plus relationships, right? You could have relationships first or attendance, right? That's how we add. One plus two is the same as two plus three. Attendance plus relationships. And then we add to that component, just that teaching and learning, both ways, through our students and our teachers. And that equals S squared, student success. It's what we live by, that's what we focus on. That's Horace Mann Middle School, that's what led us to success. I'd also say, a big part of that is our staff and our students, our people within this building. You're going to see tonight, as we take some tours later on tonight, amazing facility, great renovations through the referendum, but also comes down to our students and our staff and the great things that we do. So that's what I have about Horace Mann tonight. Questions for me?
Any comments from the board? Well, Dr. Phillips, thank you very much for what you've been doing. Lance, did you have something?
I did not, no.
You did not? Okay. Thank you very much for what you've done and with the students here and staff. It's a great facility and a great place to learn, and we're excited about it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. See you, sir.
Agenda item number seven. Wausau area Montessori charter school principal, Elizabeth Channel, will share an update on the area Montessori charter school, which we can honor more in the warmth of the building versus being outside cutting a ribbon. Thank you, students, for all the things that you have done and read for us. Thank you.
All right, good evening, board. Thank you so much for joining us for our ribbon cutting this evening. It was an honor to have a chance to really celebrate the twenty years that we've been in this building and twenty years that we have been offering Montessori education to our families. I have three students here that are just going to share what they love about our school. And then we have just a small gift to give to you. So, okay, go ahead.
I like Montessori because we, I, we get to choose our schedule and also we get lots of opportunities to study what we want.
I really like Montessori because I think it really, the, the system really allows the teachers to teach at the students' level with the different lessons and the different schedules happening at the same time and for students really to go after their own pursuits.
I love Montessori because of all the teachers, especially Miss Jones.
So we just wanted to take a moment just so that you could hear the voices of our students. We are very excited to give you a tour later on so that you can see all of the spaces that the two thousand and twenty-two referendum dollars went to. And just formally, again, I just wanted to thank our community for supporting that referendum. We all know how things are right now in all the school districts across Wisconsin, and we know that we need our community's support in order for us to provide quality education to our students. So, thank you, community, thank you, school board, thank you, students. Thank you.
Now, agenda number eight. With that, I'd like to recognize speakers and students who wish to make public comments. But before we do, here are a couple reminders. The board recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on district matters. President reserves the right to stop speakers from continuing if names or positions are referred to or inappropriate language is used. Please identify yourself by name and state your address. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. Ms. Peck will be identifying on the big board over there of the time remaining. So with that, our first speaker, Mr. Decker.
Thank you, President Boucher.
Cassie, do we need the mic so that it can be picked up on TV? If you want to. On the table, right there? I just want to make sure. Mr. Decker, go ahead.
Yes, thank you for seeing me. Wanted to commend you all on running a good operation that has everyone confident that everything's just great. I did want to criticize recently the, the decision to embrace grade inflation. I was at a meeting not long ago where you were talking about grade school grades and how four being an A and a one being an F. And there's a lot of people getting threes, a lot of young people getting threes, and they really want to feel included in the top group. So you guys just diluted the entire grade system, weakened the value of an A. And I didn't want to say that's too bad, that grade inflation is a problem everywhere. And on a, I made a different note, though, a sadder note. I'm really disappointed that, that this group is continuing to pay legal fees for the cover-up of a crime here in the school. Four years ago now, when there was a wrongful arrest based on dishonest statements to police. The surveillance video proves exactly what happened, and that's why top officials in this school district are refusing to release it. And if the superintendent continues to refuse to obey open records law, I would hope that you guys, as a board, would enact your, your primary function, that'd be to fire the superintendent and hire someone who doesn't actively conceal illegal crimes or felonies. That lying to police is wrong, and the students here and the parents need to be able to trust the administration, they need to be able to trust the school board. The, currently, the, the new dishonest statement from, from your attorney that you're paying good public money to, to concoct is that the surveillance footage in question is actually individual pupil files, just like it was a report card, and that's just absurd. If that was true, then, then the records custodian would have explained that years ago when, when I first requested the video. So, I, um, yeah, it's just, it's just too bad, because I know you guys really think you're doing a good thing, representing the people, and that if, if ever called to, to make a hard decision, that you'd make the right one, and right now you're simply not. And you're allowing my family and my reputation to really suffer. And thank you for hearing me complain. I would, I would hope that this is convincing, that you guys want to see yourself as good people. I'd hope that, that the superintendent would, would obey the law, but he's just not. And, and the only thing that might get that to change is if you, if you fire him like you're supposed to. I guess that's about it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Second speaker, Deb Esther. Oh, who scribbled that on your? You must have your doctorate degree, because only doctors scribble like that.
Get to do that, ready? Okay. Okay. My name is Deb Foster. I live at seventeen oh eight Stark Street in Wausau, and I'm here to speak against the proposed increase in activity fees from fifty to a hundred dollars. And I just want to start with, the Wisconsin idea originated to apply science and learning to ensure that public policy works for the common good. So I'd like to draw on the work of political scientist Robert Putnam, whose research on community and opportunity shows how rising inequality is eroding the very foundation of equal opportunity in the United States. Putnam argues that one of the few ways we can still bridge the opportunity gap is through public education and access to enrichment activities, opportunities that connect students, build confidence, and open doors to future success. When we double activity fees, we risk turning extracurricular life into something that only some of our kids can afford. Participation in school activities, including extracurricular sports, engage students in school activities, and these activities are not luxuries. Engagement with school improves student achievement, including higher grade point averages, higher educational aspirations, more psychological resilience, and lower delinquency rates. Putnam's data show that raising fees even modestly widens this opportunity gap. It sends a message that participation and the full benefits of public education is contingent on a family's ability to pay. If we believe in the mission of public education to nurture every student's potential, then access must remain equitable. Many of our families are struggling to make ends meet, and the Wausau School District is clearly aware of this struggle. Since the introduction of this proposal at the ADOPS meeting on October twenty-seventh, the school district has sent out two separate emails addressing the very real concern of food insecurity to all families and staff members in our district. These emails shared the location of known food pantries within our community and provided an update on free and reduced meal eligibility within our schools. Raising school activity fees only deepens the financial burden for many Wausau School District families. Schools often counter, as the Wausau School District has countered in the presentation linked to this night's agenda, that they will waive fees for poorer kids. But these waivers come with stigma and underuse. Nationwide, sixty percent of students face pay-to-play fees, but only six percent receive waivers. I urge the Wausau School Board to vote no to raising activity fees and seek alternative solutions that uphold equitable opportunity for all of the Wausau students. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. And I believe that's all we have for comments. Thank you. Agenda item nine, approved consent agenda. Appointments, additional staff, replacement staff, contract increases, separations, resignations, contract decreases, terminations, leaves of absence, retirements, minutes from the regular session of October thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and the special session of October twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Payment to bills, budget status, and investment report, donations to the district. And they are HUB International, Knights of Columbus Councils, ten sixty-nine, VFW Veterans of Foreign Wars, Burns Post, three eighty-eight, and Auxiliary, Kurt Hazi, an anonymous donor, Co-Vantage Credit Union, Poland Chiropractic, American Online Giving Foundation, Forest Park, Forest Park Neighborhood, Sheldon Rouse, American Family Cup, Bethany Baptist Church, Chatterbox Charities, Custom Steel Incorporated, Elevation Homes, Ruth Geier, Michael Moan, The Needle Workshop, Riv Knights Incorporated, Snowmobile Club, Jill Tetslaw, Kyle and Elizabeth Utech, Vision Design Group, and Wausau Marathon. I'm seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended with great gratitude for donations to the district.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Old and recurring business, Education Operations Committee meeting, legal expense summary for first quarter. I believe, well, let me read this. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, Assistant Superintendent Josh Fergoot presented a summary report presenting all legal council expenses incurred during the first quarter of two thousand and twenty-five and two thousand and twenty-six. The report is broken down by law firm and by type of legal advice sought. This is a written report, was a written report, and requires no action. Is there any addition to that, Josh? No? Okay. Thank you very much. That was just informational. New business, David Grassel from Dynamic Engineering will present information on the process to update the HVAC and replace the roof at Riverview Elementary. Ryan, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you.
Take it from there.
Thank you for having us tonight. Ryan Armansky, Director of Buildings and Grounds. With me tonight, I have David Grassel. He's the project manager for Dynamic Consulting Engineers. Last February, we selected Dynamic to complete a study for the Riverview Elementary to evaluate the HVAC options that meet the best needs of the district. After reviewing the study, we asked Dynamic to proceed with designing a complete HVAC system that also included the needed structural and electrical design to support that system. Currently, we are at a point where it'd be very advantageous for us to move forward with the remaining architectural, electrical, and structural design for the remainder of the complete project scope. The goal is to work towards a sixty to seventy-five percent plant set in the upcoming months. The advantage of having this, this plant set will allow us more accurate estimates of the cost, plan for needed scheduling and potential phasing, and assist us with future RFP, our future RFP process in finding the GC to manage the project. So, I can turn it over to David, but I thought this would be a good opportunity for you to, for him to tell you a little bit about itself, a little bit about Dynamic. And more importantly, David is better able to go through the project design and process as we work for, towards preparing for this project. So, I'll give it to David.
All right. So thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you tonight. As Ryan mentioned, my name is David Grassel. I am the founding principal of Dynamic Consulting Engineers. I'm here to talk to you specifically about Riverview Elementary School. So the goal of what I'd like to cover tonight is I'd like to give you a little bit about my background personally, kind of where I came from, just give you an intro on, on where I'm at and what my knowledge base is. And then I want to talk to you a little bit about Dynamic Consulting Engineers' project experience, talk a little bit about some of our sample clients just to show you some of the work that we've done publicly and privately and how it aligns with, with the goal of the school district. And then we'll get into the meat and potatoes on specifically Riverview and talking about what that project looks like, what it entails. Ryan gave a great brief introduction, but I have a little bit more detail for that. And then the project team that I would bring to the table for that project. And then lastly, we'll talk about the project delivery and construction methodology. So my personal background is I'm a graduate from the Milwaukee School of Engineering down in Milwaukee from two thousand and four. I graduated with a bachelor's and a master's in architectural and environmental engineering, respectively. My work experience has kind of taken a little bit of a turn here and there on some different consulting engineering firms. My background is specifically in consulting engineering. I started at Graves initially, which is a full-service architectural and engineering firm. So, everything from architects on board to civil engineers to MEP engineers to even land surveyors and such, so kind of the full, you know, project scope, if you will. After a couple of years there, transitioned over to Ring and Do Chateau, which is a full-service MEP firm, so it's mechanical, electrical, and plumbing design firm. Ring and Do Chateau is based out in Milwaukee as well, is one of the probably top three largest MEP firms in the state. And then about nine years ago, made the decision to start my own engineering company, Dynamic Consulting Engineers, and have been successfully working on improving my, you know, market share and, and project delivery for the last nine years, so. So, in addition to working as a consulting engineer for, for all those times, I also have a background of, of teaching. So about two years after graduation, I started teaching at the Milwaukee School of Engineering, where I graduated in the exact same department I graduated from. Started out as a part-time nighttime teaching, usually one or two classes during the semester. And then when I started Dynamic, made the decision to also teach full-time at MSOE, really kind of from a, from a safety net perspective, not knowing where the business was going to go, but also just really enjoy teaching and educating and kind of, I like to say I teach for that aha moment where students kind of like get it, right? And the light bulb goes on. So I have a great ability, I feel like, to teach the real world to the students that are not knowing what the real world is from a, from a design standpoint. So in addition to that, also a professional engineer in Wisconsin, have been for almost twenty years now, and also six or so other states that I, that I do work in as well. So in regards to Dynamics specifically, we have a pretty wide variety of vertical market sectors that, that we do work for. I would say our two bread and butter kind of industries are commercial office buildings and, and the educational market. From the educational side, we do a lot in the primary as well as the secondary education market. From, you know, colleges, private and public, as well as, you know, institutions like yourself on the, on the public, you know, primary education side. Also do work in the, in the various other market sectors as well, depending on the need. But definitely, like I said, the office and the, and the educational sector is kind of where I, where I generally get most of my work in and do most of my projects from. This is just a very simple, just kind of showing you again some of the clients that we've worked with over, you know, the last nine years. Been very fortunate to have some of those people come with me as I've made the transition to start my own. And as you can see there, again, a wide variety of public and private colleges, right? So from UW Milwaukee, UW Madison, state work, to again Milwaukee Public Schools or Madison School District, which is the Madison version of the public school district there. And then we also do a lot of work for Marathon County. So I've worked with the gentleman here for probably six or seven years or so, maybe on eight to ten projects over that time period. Been a great repeat customer on, on doing visits with them again. And I continue to stress the public and private side because they're, they're different worlds, if you're not familiar with that, from a, you know, a design bid-build process as compared to a design bid-build process, right? There's kind of two different worlds that, that we live in, and the public sector is typically that design bid-build process to get an accurate estimate on what's going on. So moving into the Riverview School specifically. So this is obviously an aerial view of, of the school that we're talking about. And we'll dive into kind of the individual sections that I want to talk about here in a little bit. But from, you know, just the look of this, the one thing that I would point out and just kind of show you is the, the large quantity of ductwork on the roof. And that is part of the need for the project that we're talking about with the roofing replacement and the HVAC. It's kind of the cart before the horse, or the chicken, they kind of go together, and one of them has to go before the other one kind of, kind of gets done, right? So. So this is just a general visual to show you the construction timeline of the various additions to this building. The nineteen sixty-three there in the red is the original construction. There's been four additions over time. Generally speaking, we are going to stay out of the blue and out of the yellow because they are approximately ten or less years old. And that's generally speaking, good condition from, from an HVAC standpoint. The other spaces, the ninety-nine and the eighty-five edition in the green and the magenta there, as well as the original area, are the areas that our HVAC study was really focused on, although we did, we did walk through the other spaces and just make sure there was nothing odd in those spaces as well. So even though those buildings are old, that's not to say that the HVAC systems in those spaces are that vintage. Most of the HVAC systems in the, in the green, red, and the magenta were replaced around two thousand, so they're twenty to twenty-five years old or so at this point in time. From a design standpoint, we would call that functional, but really obsolete, right? They're getting to the point where they could fail any minute. Generally speaking, the life expectancy of HVAC equipment is approximately twenty years. Maybe a little bit longer if you're taking great care of it. If it's inside, right? There's a lot of factors that go into that, but that's kind of the, the general purpose and the, and the general reason things start to fail is just, just age of equipment, and it gets harder to find parts and pieces and maintain it over time. So we are at the end of that useful life for most of the equipment, again, in that green, red, and magenta area, so. So from a, from a project standpoint, right? This, this building, I have a couple pictures to show what's going on. So the picture on the top left is of, of the roof, which needs replacement. There's a lot of skylights on the roof, and they are starting to leak or, or at the point where they are also going to leak. So those are something that, in addition to just general roof replacement, is something that really should be addressed in the, in the very near future. And then, as I mentioned, there's a lot of ductwork up on the roof. So in order to replace the roof, you really need to remove the ductwork, right? So they kind of go hand in hand, and that's kind of how the, the project started, if you will. There is like three air handling units in the building, a variety of energy recovery ventilators, some, a couple boilers, and, and one chiller serving it. And again, most of those are at the end of their useful life, with the exception of in the top right. There's a couple boilers there. The one in the top left was added in two thousand and sixteen, so that's, I would call mostly state-of-the-art, relatively new. The ones adjacent to it are, again, the twenty-plus years old. And although I'm sure they're doing a great job taking care of the equipment, you can see is literally kind of held together with duct tape, right? So, so they are, they are reaching the end of their, their useful life, right? And then on the bottom, we have some examples of some of the equipment that's sitting on the roof. The one on the bottom left is the rooftop unit serving the, the library space. And the one on the bottom right is the general air handling unit serving the bulk of the building. So again, you know, being outside in our climate, it sees a lot of very cold, you know, snowy days and a lot of hot summer days, and it just wears and cares on the equipment over time, right? So. So that's kind of the general HVAC scope of the project, is looking to replace those. The existing HVAC air distribution system is a system that is, I would say, relatively unique. As it would be designed today, would not be a system that people would use. Again, it requires a little bit more specialized maintenance, people that know exactly how to take care of it. And those people are, are gradually retiring, and, and the simpler the system, generally, the better the system, especially in, in public atmospheres. When we have to go into the ceiling and pull out some of that ductwork to make the replacements, obviously the ceilings need to come down, right? So, a couple other items that we've gradually kind of added or rolled into the scope of the project is replacement of the ceilings and upgrading the existing lights from fluorescent to LED. So, really, the only added cost you have is purchasing those items because we still have to put in the labor and the time to pull them down and put them back up. So you're getting kind of a little bit extra for a very marginal in cost in, in cost overall, right? So it's, it's a very smart decision. And that's where the lighting upgrade, as well as the fire alarm upgrades, come in. As we can get above the ceilings, we can put in conduit, and we can do that while we have access, as opposed as opposed to doing it, you know, next summer and then having to come back in two or three summers and kind of do it again. As far as our project team, for those of you that may be familiar with the way projects are typically delivered, I'm an HVAC engineer. It's probably a little different to see an HVAC engineer as the lead on a project. And I would agree with you. We do probably at Dynamic about seventy-five percent of our projects where we are the lead consultant or what we would call in our industry, the prime contract holder, where we hold the contract and we bring the team in as opposed to us working for an architect. So that's the delivery that we're showing here, where we as Dynamic are the prime contract holder and we bring in the team to deliver kind of a turnkey project for the school district. So as part of that, I would act as the principal in charge and overall project manager. And then I would bring in the other people you see on the team here. From an architectural standpoint, we bring in an expert on the roofing side. That's definitely out of my wheelhouse, but I have full confidence in the people that I would bring in on my team to help support and provide that. And that's where Dan Byer Architects would would provide that role on this project. And then on the MEP side or mechanical plumbing side, I would bring in other people on my team. We have a total of three employees, so a relatively small firm. But I would bring them in to to help and, you know, support on the HVAC side as needed from a from a design standpoint, while I still kind of manage on the on the high level, if you will. On the structural side, we would bring in Pierce engineers. Pierce is my go-to structural person. We've worked with them even before Dynamic. I worked with them probably ten years prior. They are very familiar with supporting air handling units on on buildings that seem like they might not be able to support air handling units, supporting beams, putting in additional reinforcement. They are excellent that they understand the language that I speak to them when I'm asking them to do something or locate something here. And they can communicate that back to me on this is what we need to do in order to make that work, right? And on the electrical side, I would bring in Cornacke and Associates. They are, again, a trusted partner. They've done many lighting upgrades, many electrical upgrades. Obviously, they need electrical for the HVAC stuff, but they would also provide the electrical for the fire alarm as well as the the lighting upgrades. And then the last piece I have there is budget and schedule. And I just have general contractor right now that leads me into the next point that I want to make. There is some challenges and complexities with having a a design team kind of spearhead all of this and be able to provide accurate schedules and accurate estimates. And that's what I want to talk about in my my next slide. So the proposed project delivery that that we would recommend for this project is taking all of those scopes and getting to a spot that can pick a percentage. I think Ryan mentioned sixty to seventy-five percent, sixty to seventy-five percent completion. And then we would take those documents in addition to putting together an RFP and taking that out to any construction managers that the district feels is is qualified to do the work. And the intent of that would be for them to provide us pre-construction services, right? So pre-construction is anything before they stick the shovel on the ground. So they help with scheduling, they help with budgeting, means and methods. They would be able to say, hey, we know that, you know, that chiller you want to buy is a year lead time, right? So you better get that going right now so that when we come out in a year, we're ready to actually have the equipment and we don't have to wait around for it, right? So they can provide all that boots-on-the-ground support ahead of time as opposed to, again, the typical design bid build process where you would wait and then at the end we say, oh, man, we're over budget or that schedule doesn't work, right? And the goal is to help them, have them help us provide feedback on that. We can do that as engineers, but our our estimates and our recommendations are are only as good as we know. These guys live this every single day and they're they can support that very, very well. And I have some information if you if you want to talk about that as far as, you know, costs and what that looks like and percentage of construction fees based on some CMs that I've talked with in that area. Then once they're onboard, we would use them, again, to help with that process. But we would also, once we get to the finish line from a design standpoint, we would use them to then issue the documents for bid to all of their subcontractors. So that gives you a competitive bidding process to get a CM and it gives you a competitive bidding process for all your subcontractors. So it really gives you the best price because you're getting competition all along, right? And that's that's the world I live in is generally as a consulting engineer. I'm working for the owner and trying to give the owner what they want within the budget that they want while getting competition from from all the people that are installing and doing work. Then, once they issue that for bid, we select the contractors. We move into your typical construction and your and your occupancy period. The other thing that I would say is one of my goals when I go through this is when I issue documents for bid, my overall intent is always to issue the documents and then I don't have to talk to the construction manager. And I always have to explain that because the goal is when I issue the documents, I don't want to have to answer, well, what am I supposed to do for this? And what am I supposed to do for this? And what am I supposed to do for this, right? So there's a lot of times as engineers, we say, take this pipe to the nearest XYZ or do this as necessary, right? And I find it as my job to find out where the nearest XYZ is and find out what is necessary. So I take a little more time upfront, but the intent is try to minimize cost override, change orders, scope creep, and stuff like that as we as we get into the design process. So so that's the the proposed delivery method that we have that I think would suit the district very well just from, again, a boots-on-the-ground assistance upfront and then the expertise of a consulting engineer helping along with it. So with that, that is, that's my presentation. I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Let's open it up to the board for questions.
Is the the thought that you want us to fund somehow out of district funds the cost of the planning and the design so that we then get to a point of having a good idea what the actual construction cost would be, which would then set us up for a referendum? Or what what's the what's the thought of going through this process when we don't have the... The reason we didn't include this in our last project is we didn't have the millions of dollars it takes to do this project.
Right, I understand. And and what we're looking at is, actually, I've been budgeting for paying for this so we can have a set of plans ready to go. We don't, you're correct, we don't know where the money's going to come. But we've also had, just my short tenure here, we've had ranges from four-point-two million, six-point-eight. We need to have a a set of plans that is ready to go so we can so we can budget for that, whether that's referendum or whatever it might be. So because oftentimes these designs, if we wait to referendum, we don't have an accurate number or then we get the go-ahead and now it's another eight months, nine months before the design is done. These plans should have, well, they will have a shelf life. I mean, if if we don't, we can't go on twenty-seven, which that's kind of the goal. If we can figure that out, if it would go to twenty-eight, the the plans themselves, what we're going to do should be good. So you're right, there is that funding issue. But at some point, I just felt it was important that we work towards knowing what we're going to do. So, you know, if that opportunity, when that opportunity comes, we're ready to go.
How many systems do we have, AC systems do we have in that building? And how many boilers? You look, gave us three, but, you know, as you put these things together, having done a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-square-foot high school building in the past, I know that, you know, you're going to look at redundancy in boilers. You're going to be looking at a chiller. That's going to be huge to cover that whole square footage up there. Not three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand square feet, but it's it's going to be a big one. You're going to have to reinforce the ceilings and all of that to hold it on top. Or is it going to be down below and take it as much off of the roof as you possibly can so you don't have to go with reinforcement, which would be costly if you go down that route? So I'm kind of throwing out these questions because it kind of follows in with what Lance is talking about. Then what are we talking about with dollars? And is it, you start looking at reinforcement of the ceiling based on the the walls and everything like that. It's going to be costly. And when you start putting a whole new venting system in the building itself, you're going to shut down different areas in order to get that venting system in there. I know enough to be dangerous, so that's why I'm asking that question.
Yeah, so I can give you a, I can get as detailed as you want or we can keep it as high-level as you want. Maybe high-level, there's there's three boilers. So those are the three boilers that serve the entire school. The school's about eighty-thousand square feet. As far as I know, they do just fine with with the school. There's one chiller, it's about a hundred-and-eighty tons. It serves the same area that we are going to serve parts of the school. The two thousand sixteen and the two thousand twenty-two addition are not served by the chiller. So they are they are off on their own, so that takes some load off of the chiller. My initial calculations, it's very close, but we should be able to get by with the existing chiller. My thought is potentially using like an alternative system, like a rooftop unit to serve the library or possibly the gym would pull some load off so we don't have to... The chiller's only about ten years old, so I prefer not to replace the chiller. So we can we can pick systems that are kind of like, I call them single-zone systems, like, again, the cafeteria or the gymnasium or the library. We can have one thermostat and one piece of equipment to serve one dedicated space. And that's great at pulling load off. As far as your reinforcing question, the chiller's on grade currently. Again, we would try to leave it there. The there are a handful of air handling units on the roof currently and there is steel up there already. Whether that's sufficient for the new air handling units we put up there, I don't know that yet. We haven't we haven't got that far. But the intent would be that we would reuse the steel or we would we would support. There's a lot of, I'm not going to say we can do it perfectly, but there's a lot of tricks that we can do where you can build support structures off of the columns. And by building it off of the columns, the columns are the pieces that that hold the weight. And usually the footings can handle a little bit of additional weight. It's just the steel above the roof that you need. But I've taken bar joists and we put angles on them and reinforced, you know, bar joists. So there's a lot of reinforcing that that may need to be done. But there is existing equipment already up there and the intent is trying to locate them strategically in the places they already are, so hopefully that reinforcement is is minimal.
I'll maybe just clarify or add on to it. I think we we all understand that the the roof at Riverviews, it's an inevitable fix that we're going to have to attack at some point. By doing this, where we can submit this plan out for RFP, it allows us to get some competitive bids, to get the best dollar amount that we can and then submitting that out for what our resource, our revenue resource is going to be, whether that be referendum, whether it be some of our Fund Forty-Six, what does that look like? So this is going to give us a better dollar amount that we're seeking after to plan into the future. And it's kind of like the chicken or the egg a little bit is to get a good RFP. You have to have a good plan. Without the good plan, you can't get the sound RFP.
So just, again, there are people up here, Cory, who understand construction substantially better than I do and I'm guessing substantially better than a lot of the people watching or listening to us right now. So I'm going to put this in language that I understand and make sure I have it right. We're looking at three different pots. We're looking at the design process, which is you with Dan Byer with the MEP with structural, electrical, all of that creating the plan.
Yep.
That plan, the next step would be then, second pot, which is to do an RFP for a GC and RFP for subcontractors. If that's kind of part of the first pot, then it would be the second process.
First, we would just do general CMs.
Okay.
And the intent would be to pre-qualify the CM that you want to work with. So they are the people that would be running the project.
Yep.
So not not subcontractors yet, but eventually, yes.
So plan first.
Yep.
GC next, so, okay. And then, once that was in process, then we would be getting an actual budget and a schedule. So this first part, we'll call it Pot A, which is the plan creation, you and your team would do.
Correct.
That is something we'd want to, because if I understand, we're looking ideally to do this in two thousand twenty-seven. I'm assuming the planning takes a minimum of, what, three to six months to put that reasonably?
Probably a little longer, but yeah, yes.
Yeah, six months to nine months?
Yep.
So we would want to start that
Yep.
almost immediately with a goal because obviously, construction can take much, much longer. Do we have at this point an estimate for the cost of Pot One?
Yes, so so the HVAC, my fee on the HVAC design side is somewhat tied to the overall cost of the project, but generally speaking, we're in like the two-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollar range. And that's for the HVAC work. And then the, I'll call it, general trades or the electrical stuff was about another hundred and five. So all in, you're about three-eighty.
Okay. And then we'd be looking ideally for to find a way to fund that with what we have. And from there, we would go into the the conjunction manager, RFP, once you have that plan put together six to nine months from now.
So we would we would ideally issue, we would like to issue the seventy-five percent set in like January or February so that we can get the CM onboard to help with the budget. Based on where we're at, it's seventy-five percent. So if we look at the seventy-five percent set and they say, holy cow, this is a thirty-million-dollar project, then we can say, timeout, we got to, we got to reevaluate, right? So we want them to help educate us on where we're at. And by the way, I don't think we're there. But we want them to help us know where we're at. And then we would, if we have to make adjustments, we'll make adjustments. If not, then, again, they should have a, they're not going to be perfect, but they should be within, I would say, ten to fifteen percent of where it's going to be. And then and then, once it goes out, then we would have the actual number, yeah.
So does that three-hundred-and-eighty thousand include the process of the RFP and bringing the CM on?
It would include my work for doing that. It would not include the CM.
Okay.
So generally, what I have been told is if we issue an RFP and we ask for pre-construction services, we're going to see a variety of numbers. They said typically, and I talked to somebody locally that I just did a project with Marathon County on, and they told me if you are issuing the RFP with the understanding that the work will come later on, I can't guarantee it, but generally speaking, the pre-construction numbers are going to be very low, if not free, because it's at their advantage to also be part of the team and help that process along and it's helping them in the end. So they're, they said it's generally going to be, they said, a high number of the ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
So if I'm understanding, what we're looking for at the point where you ask us to to approve something is to approve a budget of roughly four-hundred-thousand dollars to get us through the design process, the seventy-five percent and the the RFP and the hiring of a construction manager, at which point you would then come back to us with a budget and a schedule, at which point we'd definitely be looking at some sort of other funding or referendum.
Well, and but of that two-fifty and two-seventy-five for for David's work, that is, that's not all upfront. That would be, that would be the cost if the project moves forward. So there's there's certain phases.
There's a little wiggle.
There's certain phases that that payments go, that that as as he designs and as he does some of the certain processes, that's when we pay it out.
So there's there's scary outs if he finds out that it's going to be twenty-five, thirty million dollars at any point within the process. We can pull the plug.
Correct, that, so the two-seventy-five is through construction.
Yeah, it is, it's all the way through completion. Because once the project goes into construction, I'm still here at at meetings. I'm looking at equipment to make sure that you're getting what you're expecting to getting. So there's still work for me all the way to the end, so, yeah.
Right, that's helpful, thank you.
So basically, Ryan and Kale, you're trying to get things started. So we're prepared for the future right now, trying to get the plans and get us as good of prices as we possibly can and how long those prices can hold. You can bring that back to us because, obviously, if you give us prices today, it's going to be different from prices a year to two years down the road. So question, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. Do you think that this project might fall under the the DOE's, what is it, Renew America School, right? Program where they've got the Department of Energy put out five-hundred-million dollars for grants for schools to go and upgrade their HVAC and cooling? And if if that is, I know they've doled out it quite a bit, but if we can still fall under, is there a window we need to make a decision by to lose that funding if it is available?
So last, I knew the only credits were related to geothermal. I guess I'm not sure if there's anything specific. I have to, I have to look.
Okay.
It'd be interesting.
Any other questions?
Just one, and maybe I'm too far down the road, but we've always talked about how one of the problems with that roof is how much is up on top of there with all the ductwork. But now you started talking about still keeping as much up there as we can.
Well, we would, we would take it down and then we would, we'd put stuff back up. Would ultimately, we would have.
Doesn't that put us in the same position? Not us, because I won't be on the board then. Doesn't it put somebody else in the same position the next time it needs roofwork? Now we got all this ductwork up there and all this other stuff and we've sort of put the next, the next board in a bad position.
You're just going to put the equipment back up, not the ductwork.
There's going to be some ductwork back up. So the reason there's ductwork up there is because it doesn't fit in the ceiling. I mean, that's the, that's the simple answer is, is, you know, you have a floor to, you know, top of the roof of whatever, twelve feet and you want a nine-foot ceiling in the classroom. So there's just no space between the ceiling and the and roof to conceal it. We can, you know... Um, we can, you know, one of the ways to help with that is you can elevate the ductwork a little bit more, so you can get under there and do some re-roofing. But it is, um, it is challenging, I don't disagree with that, yes.
Trust. I told Ryan, just to put a slope roof and trust the whole thing, then, then it's all in sight, doesn't matter. And the snow falls off.
Yeah, right onto the people walking by.
Anybody? Now moving back, uh, any follow-up questions from the board, so we can then?
Uh, plans middle to the state just won't take place until we do it.
I would say we wouldn't do that until we know we're gonna pull the trigger, yeah. There's no point in paying, uh, they generally have a year timeline, once it gets approved.
Anything with this project that might be affected by the commercial energy codes that haven't, that were gonna be implemented, you know, it might be a few, couple months, yeah, over there?
Yeah, I. We use. Yeah. Uh, not, I don't think so, I don't think anything substantial.
Okay.
Ryan, any follow-up?
Well, no, it, it's just, we did, we did start on the design, on the HVAC design, so as we started working on that, part of that was the study to see what our options are. And then to start designing to see what, what, you know, what are, what are, what can we do about stuff on the roof and so forth, and we found some limitations. Part of the reason why it's on the roof is they had limitations on the building itself. So we're at that stage where it makes sense to move the next, to the next direction before David gets too far into it. Now it's time to, for the other architects and electrical to start working together, so we aren't doing things twice. So that's, that's essentially the, the point we're at right now. And we just wanted to, just wanted to bring it to your attention on what we're doing, and see if you had any questions and so forth.
I think we'll have more questions down the road. It's nice to see somebody from MSO be here, maybe our project lead way program can tie into you.
Sure.
As you are doing this project, that way it becomes academically benefit for our students.
I would, I would love to do that, honestly, I love to teach, so I would be more than happy to show that off as we're going through it.
And I don't say that with tongue-in-cheek, I say that because a lot of school districts have done that, where the engineering program ties right into what's going on, and the kids get the benefit right there. And it becomes a curriculum type of thing as well, so, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Appreciate the information, and this is, this was information, this was not for motion at this point in time. All right, committee structure, uh, we're moving on to the next. Thank you very much, David, hope to see you in the future. Thanks, Ryan. Uh, next part of the, uh, agenda is the board will discuss the current structure process, the name of the Education Operations Committee. And this is kind of a lead-in to a question I had many years ago, that I was educated by Lance on, that now, uh, it's probably time to take a look at it. And Lance, I'm gonna turn it over to you, because you brought it to our attention, go ahead.
Yeah, and it's really, um, it's the next one to the audit of bills procedure as well, there are really two related issues that I brought up before and talked about changing before, um, but there's always something, there's always some crisis we're working on, whether it was a referendum or consolidating schools, or another referendum, or a second attempt to consolidate schools, or whatever. Um, so we're finally gonna talk about it. Um, the, I guess I'll do it in the opposite order, the audit of bills procedure, the question I have on this is, for those who don't know, um, four members of our Audit of Bills Committee meets fifteen minutes before the Education Operations Committee meeting to review, um, the, the bills and payments for the month. And then that gets sent on to the regular meeting, which we had tonight, where the whole board read, has all the information and the board approves it. It isn't that meeting fifteen minutes ahead of time is really all that big of a burden, I just don't see the purpose of it. I think that the audit of bills agenda item should be handled like all the other agenda items, it should be part of the Education Operations Committee meeting that the whole board looks at, it doesn't, it won't cost board members any extra time, because the whole board is reviewing all that information for the regular meeting anyway. Um, so I think rather than having that committee, it, it came from a period of time where we had all kinds of committees, which leads me to the next thing, but. So that would be one suggestion, is that I don't think we need the Audit of Bills Committee, I think the Audit of Bill should be a standing agenda item on our, um, committee night that then the whole board refers, instead of four of us, four of us referring it to the regular meeting, all of us would refer it to the regular meeting, like everything else we do with the Ed Ops meeting. And then the second issue is the, the, the structure, or really committee name, um, the Ed Ops Committee, and a bit of history, we used to have literally an education committee of four members that discuss education issues, and four members that discussed operation issues, with the president going back and forth, meeting at the same time in separate rooms. And I, that, that started before I was on the board, um, I think the thought was that it would save time, but it did not, because then what would happen is then when you have the regular meeting, if I was in the, in the operations committee and something got referred from the education, well, it doesn't mean I don't get to ask questions. So now at the regular meeting, I'm asking all the questions I would've asked at the prior meeting, we're doing the whole presentation a second time. So then we changed it, um, to, well, let's have those meetings back-to-back, so that if you wanted to attend both committee meetings, you could. And then everybody attended both committee meetings. So then we said, well, let's just have it all at one meeting, instead of having two meetings back-to-back. So then we had it all, so then it became this Education Operations meeting. We used to also have a Policy Committee as well, that was separate. Now we do it all in that one meeting. Um, at a minimum, we should remove, in my opinion, the Education Operations title, because we don't, don't just do Education Operations, we also do Policy. That, that committee just went away and never got put into the name. Uh, so I think we should take out the Education Operations part of it. And then, what it's named after that, um, it, it could just be called Committee of the Whole, a lot of districts do that. Um, I think that's still a little bit, um, confusing, if you look at what happened after our last meeting where we had, um, our athletic fees discussion, the media reported as a committee, referred it to the full board, there was a full board referring it to the full board. So another option would be Stevens Point has their regular meeting every month, that's why Stash you have to have. And then their other meeting that they have each month is just called Board Meeting, and then in parentheses, it has, it might say Special Meeting, it might say Workshop Meeting, it might say, you know, Superintendent Review Meeting, or whatever it is. So there's different options. Uh, I did not ask administration to bring any ideas or information to us, because I didn't know if anyone else would be interested in it. So I thought I'd bring it up tonight, if other board members are interested, then administration could give it some thought and come back to us, and we could ask questions. Um, obviously, it's not urgent, but I, I think, I think it, it, it's something that should be changed. I think it's left the way it is, just because it's kind of a pain to change it, 'cause we gotta change our policies. But, um, just for board member information, we do not have to go through and vote on all of our policies. Administration has the authority to make that type of change to policies, where they can change names and things like that, without going through and having us reapprove all of the, all of the policies. Um, but that, so that, that's, that was my thought, um, just ban the audit of bills and add it into the regular agenda for our, um, Ed Ops Committee meeting, which should no longer be called the Ed Ops Committee meeting.
When I saw that, uh, you were bringing the idea, or would like to bring the idea to the board, I thought it was a great idea at that time, and still do, because it's time to have a discussion about these types of things. As you said, this was done before you got on the board, and we're talking sixteen years, you know, things do change. And board members have changed, and board situations have changed. So I thought it was a great idea to bring it to all of us and have an open discussion where we wanna go with this. Uh, because change is good, number one. Number two, if change is needed, it's even better. And if it, we find out through discussion that, uh, change is a need, that increases the, even the reason why we want to go. So I'd like to hear everyone else's ideas on this, and maybe we can have the, uh, administration follow-up and to find out what other types of, uh, structures others have. You mentioned a couple, I could mention probably seven others that I've talked to, how they run their monthly meetings, and, uh, we could take the best from everyone and make it the best for us. Any comments?
So many comments. First of all, I just really wanna appreciate Lance for bringing this up, because I've had a lot of questions and thoughts in this area. In the boards that I have been experienced with and involved with, committee structures allowed three-ish board members to take a very deep dive into a specific area in a way that not everybody had to, and then bring a report to a larger board with recommendations based on a deep dive. And the understanding and the respect within the room was that those people had done that deep dive, brought their knowledge and experience to it, and were making an educated opportunity, or educated suggestion, recommendation, whatever else. And yes, there needs to be some type of questions and things like that, but it allowed that, that deeper wealth of knowledge to, to happen and, and go forward. And those committees do not necessarily all have to be board members, historically, they can be a mix of board members and community members and teachers and things like that. So if you have an education committee that's meeting, they're looking at things that the board as a whole, as a policy governance board, shouldn't necessarily be diving deep into, some of the, the curricular pieces and the grade instructions and things like that. Um, same with, with operations or policy or finance. Um, as treasurer, I've made a point of meeting with Josh, meeting with our Assistant Superintendent, so that I have a strong understanding of the financials when he then reports them. Now, that could be me presenting it in the future as the head of a committee, or he could be the head of a committee. That said, I understand that as a board of nine, not everybody has the capacity or the time to add an hour meeting to their life, or a two-hour meeting to their life. Um, but I think if we're going to have committees, they have to be purposeful, they have to be meaningful, they have to have a reason to exist, and then they have to be seen that way when that information comes to the board as a whole, as opposed to just a rubber stamp. And I agree with Lance, that is what the audit of the bills is right now.
Yeah.
If anybody has questions, they're going to Josh ahead of time, they're dealt with ahead of time, or they're dealt with when he comes before the whole board.
Which would still, which should still happen for every agenda item, that you should, if you have a question ahead of time, you should give it to administration, so in the coming meeting, they can.
I do also think we have some confusion within the committee, in the community, because we meet only as a committee as a whole. That is seen as a board meeting. Um, and we saw that very clearly, as Lance said, with the last meeting that we had. Uh, both going into it with people talking about what we were going to talk about, what we did talk about, and their reactions to it. When we meet as a whole board, whatever name we put on the agenda, we are seen as a whole board, uh, not as a committee.
And it's been seen, not only at that last meeting, but it's been seen throughout the years, and that's what people get confused with the two meetings during that period of time.
One of the things that they brought up at the Wasby meeting, which they've also brought up in other trainings that Jim, you and I have been to, and some of the others, is that a best practice for a school board is that seventy to eighty percent of their time in board meetings is spent around the students, the needs of the students, the success of the students, what's working and what's not. And that, I think, should be our goal, is to find ways for our core board meeting to be on the student success of our district.
I'm gonna compliment our board, and I've been saying this for quite a while, in fact, that our board has been a very cordial, working board together than what I have seen in the past, I'm not talking the past here, I'm talking about my previous experiences of boards. Board members trust one another, board members are bringing up points of view, and we have agreed, we disagree, but we agree to disagree. And we've understood that, and, and I look at this board as being a board that can do this again. Many boards have gone to the committee in the whole, because board members didn't trust other board members. And I think since we've been, and many of us have been working with Wisconsin Association of School Boards, to how do we become a better board? We've gone through a lot of professional development ourselves, we're learning more and more how to work as a board. I think that has helped us become more efficient in what we're doing, and I think if this becomes a situation where we can become even more efficient.
Yeah, and I don't think, um, and you didn't say it was, I don't think it was really a trust issue at the time, um, with, when we had the prior committee, um, structure, which I would not want to go back to. Um, I, I just think it's when you're an elected, when you're elected by the community, your job isn't to just go with what somebody else who was elected by the community says you should go with at a meeting that you didn't attend. And so I feel like I'm elected by the community for what I think, um, right or wrong, and so if, if something's presented to the board from other board members at a meeting that I wasn't at, I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk about it and ask questions about it, same as I would any other time. And that's what happened. And so it didn't save time having four people on, discuss education issues at this meeting, and four people discuss financial issues at this meeting, 'cause then we all discussed it all anyway. So I, I'm not suggesting that we not have the Education Operations meeting of the whole. Um, I just don't think it should be named as it is, because the name causes confusion. And we do have committees, so we have, we have actual committees, we have standing committees that, that, you know, you've appointed people to, we have, um, every now and then, we have a committee, like when we had the elementary, um, task force, where we, you know, create committees. Um, so there are, we have some standing committees that are true committees, that then bring a recommendation to the board, but then they bring a recommendation to the whole board, the whole board all discusses it.
I like the idea of the working meeting versus the meeting meeting.
When you break it down, and I think I sent this to you several years ago, when I first got on the board here, when you break it down like that, you can get a lot done in a smaller committee, and then bringing it to the whole committee. And then we understand, you've already ruminated over a lot of the things, and when you bring that to us as a committee to suggest a move forward, I think that's what you're, you're talking about, Lance, is that now a group, smaller group have done that work.
Or a bigger group, we've done it in ways where like the elementary, the elementary task force was a much bigger group that met and brought it to the board. So I, I think there are times where those are very useful. But I, I think we should keep our structure of two board meetings a month of the whole board. But I think that, that first or second, however you wanna describe it, board meeting is, it's confusing to people when we name it as we do.
Any question, John, or Cory, or Charles, I mean, three of us.
The audit one isn't, isn't necessary, that can be rolled in, easy enough.
Well, I think it's something that's, we brought it to the table. I think we need to continue to discuss this and maybe look at the, the name of the, uh, if we keep the whole committee in the whole, I think we need to be able to name it a little differently, which would be more appropriate for what we're gonna be doing at that. Because open meetings do have to follow open meeting laws, and we need, still need to have agendas, things of that fashion, that, uh, maybe the name needs to be changed, because it doesn't represent what we're really doing at that time. And, and so this becomes a very good discussion point. So I look at our superintendent here and ask that, uh, possibly put some things together, and we can help in our own areas, because we're connected with a lot of people, uh, with Wisconsin Association School Boards, we could start looking at those types of things too, what can they bring to us? So, any other follow-up, otherwise I'm gonna move us along. Good discussion, uh, again, Lance, thank you for bringing it, uh, to the forefront, we need to always reevaluate what we're doing. Uh, agenda end, agenda item eleven D one, Activities Code update. At the October Education Operations Committee meeting, John Tomsky presented a short presentation on a proposed addendum to the Athletics and Activities Code to reflect the change in grading practices, proposed student fees, and course approvals. John, is there anything you wanna continue to add on that at this point?
As far as course fees and, uh, Activities Code, no.
Okay, well then I'll take care of that by, I'm seeking a motion to approve the addendum to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Wausau School District, six through twelve Athletics and Activities Code effective immediately.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any follow-up questions?
I do, if I could, want to bring forward, and I don't know if we wanna discuss it or suggest it, but, um, Doug Foster brought up, uh, a data point that I had seen as well, which is the concept of, of waivers and, and finding support for students and families who can't afford, because I.
That could, uh, Sarah, come up a little bit later.
Sure. Tell me what.
This, this is something that wouldn't, isn't including that necessarily, but you're talking about, what she brought up was the Athletics and Activities, um, increase in money, correct?
Yes, so I thought we were talking about those fees, we're not?
Just the, uh.
Just the course?
Just the course, just the code, just the code, that's all we're doing right now. All right, any follow-up question to that, for clarity?
I'll take mine back.
No, that's okay, thank you, I appreciate the fact that we're ready to discuss the other item. Okay, with that, all in favor? Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Again, next item would be eleven D two, and this is, the item was presented at the October Education Operations Committee meeting. The first motion here that I'm gonna seek is, I'm seeking a motion for approval of all fee increases and reductions as discussed for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year.
So this again is not the athletic.
No, not yet.
So moved.
Second.
Follow-up questions? That's within.
Hello.
All right.
Hi, Darcy, this is Cassie. Can you hear us?
Yes, we can.
Okay, you're on.
Okay, I'm gonna follow up by, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, this is leading into what you're talking about. Now, I'm seeking a motion for approval of an increase in the high school athletics fee from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year.
So moved. Second.
Questions?
Now.
You're on, you're on.
Yep, so I have a presentation with some additional data.
Okay, so you wanna do that, then I'll ask my question?
Yes, because I'm gonna.
So you're not on yet.
Okay, not yet.
So, just kidding, yeah.
Still not.
Okay, so we have our ADs, they are logging in remotely, old school, no WebEx tonight.
Hi, Darcy.
I'm told it's the headphone.
We hear you.
Okay, so I'm just gonna kind of narrate what slide we're on so they can follow, follow along remotely, so so just to review, we are proposing an increase to our athletics fee from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars with a cap of two hundred for three-sport athletes. So a student in three sports would not have to pay three separate fees, we'd cap it at two hundred dollars. So rationale, it's been since two thousand and one, since we've looked at increasing our athletics fee. I do believe in our last meeting Pat calculated at eighty-four percent since two thousand and one as far as inflation. So in today's dollars, fifty dollars is actually closer to ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. In addition to inflation, costs have increased, again due to inflation, but also stagnated funding over the last twenty-four, twenty-five years, has created some budgetary constraints specific to athletics. Last year, both high schools did run a deficit in their budget, those numbers are up there. And those athletic, those athletic budgets are really prioritized to the required essential items to run an athletics program. And I'm gonna be getting into some of those specifics here later as far as what exactly that money goes towards. So just some examples of increasing costs over time, and we just took a very recent snapshot, so it's tough digging up data from twenty-four years ago, but we're able to look at the recent past for some increases in costs, just to just to try to give the board an idea of of what our athletics budget covers. So we see an increase in officiating costs. Those are just some really random examples of different referees across different sports and the cost increase over the past five years. When we looked at the budget as a whole of what we spent on officiating, it's about a thirty-five percent increase over the past five years in just officiating costs. Transportation is a similar story. We're able to look back about three years and approximately saw a fifty percent increase in transportation costs for athletics. Little snapshot down there of of the budget specific to Wausau West going back to two thousand and one. Their athletic budget was one hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars, two hundred, one hundred and twenty-one, two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. And this year's is one eighty-two, three fifteen, which is approximately fifty percent increase over twenty-four years. We matched it up to our inflation number, we're we're off by about thirty-four percent for inflation. Just again, another snapshot at our current budgets, so one eighty-two, one fifty-five, and then those are the numbers that were collected from fees last year that go into this year's budget. So again, the fee increase that we are seeking for tonight won't actually be felt in the budget until the twenty-seven, thank you, twenty-eight school year. Some examples of expenses, so I've, we have this year's budget along with a breakdown of some of the expenses that went into each athletics budget last year. So there's the officiating budget between east and west, the transportation costs between east and west. Operational expenses, so that number is just based on what each school spends on the same operational items, and I'm gonna get into those on the next slide, but that's why those two numbers are the same. In reality, if we really went through and looked at what they spent for operational or consumable costs, it'd probably be more than that. And then that's what we spent on entry fees into tournaments and competitions and things like that. So some examples of those operational costs, those consumables, huddle subscriptions, our our filming software and equipment, and CPR certifications for coaches, conference dues, porta-potties for our facilities, our subscription to our school, Neptune Radio that runs all of our music at our events, our Train Heroic app that helps with our strength and conditioning program. So just a snapshot of what goes into those operational costs, really just the idea being it's not balls and nets and the equipment, there's there's more to it than that. Oh, and the last point, a lot of that stuff didn't exist in two thousand and one, apps and software and whatnot. So how will we use the increase in fees to benefit programs? All the fees will go directly into the athletics budget, which then gets put into the athletic programs, so it will assist in those things I just listed on on the previous slide, refreshing equipment, consumables, different services that we have for athletics budget. We do have various booster clubs that offer, that operate across the district. Each one operates a little differently, but it would allow them some greater flexibility in how they support their programs, because right now some of them are being tapped into to pay for some of those essential equipments and consumables for the programs where an increase in the budget would hopefully offset some of that, would allow those booster clubs a little more flexibility in how they support their programs. A look at athletic fees around our conference, around our area, even getting out across the state. SPAS uses a tiered system. I believe they go three different tiers. Their athletics are in tier one and tier two. Their tier one is a hundred and fifty per sport, their tier two is a hundred per sport. Everest does a similar tiered system, theirs ranges from fifty-five to seventy-five a sport. We are currently fifty, seeking to raise it to a hundred. This would put us in between SPAS and Everest as far as the the higher fees in the in the conference. Marshfield is forty with a two per max, and Rapids does not have a user fee. So when we look at our conference and we look across the state, it's really a mixed bag based on the district. So Merrill does not have a user fee, Mozenay, again, another area district is forty, but when we look at another multi-high school district to the west, O'Clare is two hundred. So it's it's really just a mixed bag of depending what district you go to and what their user fee is. So fee reduction process, some great feedback at our last meeting about advertising it on our website, and I think I can say, I I feel confident saying this, that this process has maybe highlighted an opportunity for us to be a little more purposeful about how we advertise and how we communicate that fee waiver and fee reduction process, because we never want fees to be a barrier for any student to access anything in our schools, whether that's a course, whether that's an activity, or whether that's athletics. So we talked a little bit, I believe Lance brought the suggestion of a website, of putting a link on our website. We're working on that right now. I would also foresee some opportunities of rolling this into our scheduled pickup process at the high schools, open houses at the middle schools, putting up QR codes around the different stations at those, at those events, making those links and processes more explicit, I guess, in our communications that we send home in preparation for that start of the year stuff like fee payments and scheduled pickups and those sorts of items. So with that, that's just some data to help inform our decision tonight, and open any questions you may have.
Okay, we're in that question area.
All right, so first of all, you said twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year, is that accurate?
Yes, so this, so this fee would go into effect next school year, it would be collected next school year, which would inform the budget.
Do you want the budget for the following school year? Okay, but it would affect parents in the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. Okay. You mentioned a goal of more flexibility for booster clubs. Why do we need, why do they need that flexibility? What is their actual idealized purpose?
Well, I think when you think of a booster club, you're probably not paying for the bare, you're not, you're not looking for paying for the bare essentials. And again, every booster club has a different philosophy, but it should be more about enhancing the athlete's experience and the experience of students and and the athletes and what they do in the program.
So rather than paying for day-to-day expenses.
Right.
Something in addition to.
In addition to, rather than paying for balls and equipment or equipment refreshes, which to be transparent, I don't believe every booster club does, but some of them do.
So your slide said free and reduced lunch, fifty percent reduction. And I, did I read that correctly? If a student is currently on free and reduced lunch, they automatically get a fifty percent reduction in their athletic fee?
Yes.
Okay, and that is how.
Let me confirm that real quick, sorry. Let me confirm that real quick with our folks on the phone. DJ Darcy?
Yes, it's not automatic, but they are entitled to that if they mention that, like, we don't have that, we don't have that information, so they would have to mention that to us to get the reduced rate.
Is there a way that we can put that bonus on us instead of on the student where?
Those restrictions on who gets to know.
Right, and then this is, this is what I'm saying, like, I'm trying to figure out how that would work, because obviously that list of students is not gonna go to the athletic department for them to be able to adjust the fees.
Right.
But, you know, going back to what I was going to say originally, and you've addressed quite a bit of it, and I appreciate that, but she's right in that if you look at data across the country, the percentage of need based on financials and the percentage of students who take advantage of that, there's a massive discrepancy. And and a lot of it does come down to fear or shame or or any of those things that we never want our students to feel when our goal is belonging. So anything that we can do to make it less of an onus on them, to make sure their experience is not any different, I think is really important. And I love the website idea because it takes it off of the the onus of of the student or the parent to have to say to somebody, an athletic director in the face, I need financial assistance, which is really hard and scary to do. So I want to make sure that that is at the top of mind as we go forward in this, and and anything that we can do to figure that out.
Well, couldn't the, couldn't the, so I brought up the idea last time of having, just write on the website, here's the application that it gets submitted. Couldn't that just go to someone other than the athletic director that has that information, so?
Well, you you have to sign up for free and reduced, and that money, or that is already in the system at the schools, and so you could go off of that. But to, but for the school to go and say to a family, you can't afford it, we're gonna help you, then, ah, that, you can't do that. You can't do that. So we're kind of.
But it could also be, you do qualify for this, check yes or no, I want. You know, if if that list, if if the coaches or the athletic director could take that list of students who have, I'm gonna say applied, that's not the right word, but I, my feet are coming out, auditioned, tried out for a sport and was on that team to whoever has that free and reduced information, and that's an email home or whatever else that says, hey, you already qualify, you know this, you're getting free and reduced lunch, your student has been accepted onto this team, please check yes or no that you want a reduced fee.
Shouldn't it be built into, because this is all done on, I have kids in sports in high school, and I'm pretty sure we pay it all online, so couldn't there be a checkbox online when you're paying that we qualify for?
That somebody other than the athletic director confirms.
Yeah, because the athletic director can't see it.
Right, somebody that already has that information can confirm that, right?
Correct, and that goes back to your counselors. Your counselors would be in charge of your free and reduced, so they would be able to, and you gotta be careful with that because of the fact that that's all confidential. So you're really, we want to do as much we can for families, but the families understand, have to understand that we can't go over and above because now that we're crossing the line in knowledge of what we should know. I I I appreciate all the comments that you're talking about because of the fact, as an athletic director, I've been in those situations where we're dealing with fees like this, and it was very difficult to get to the families because they didn't want to be gotten to in some cases. So it's really to put it off to the community to really work together on this, because I understand it to a point in the fact that in nineteen ninety, or it was nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three school year, we went to activity fees for the first time. The reason I know that is because I had all three of my kids at the high school at that time, and they were all three-sport athletes. And I kept on thinking, whoa, even though it was little at that time, it was a lot at that time. And so I appreciated the fact that fifteen dollars a sport was tough. That's nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three. We didn't increase until two thousand and one to fifty dollars. That was a big jump at that point in time. And kind of going back to your comment about the fact that if we would have been increasing five dollars every year or every other year, we'd be almost at a hundred dollars right now. But we have to be sensitive to families, because some families are gonna have two, three-sport athletes. It could be a lot of money. You don't, you don't have anything down there for two in the family out for three sports. You have it for one, now you're expecting a family of two that are at the high school, or three-sport athletes. They're still putting out four hundred dollars. That's a big shock as we go to all of this. So I'm just kind of throwing that out, but we have to be careful. We need to make sure we follow it legally.
One thing I would add too, that's really important for us, is to market to our families the supports that are available, because on one hand, you have the kids who are out for the sports who need help, but the concern would be the kids who don't ever go out for the sport because they think that's prohibitive. Right, so so we let all the kids know, we have supports if you need it.
You brought up about the foundation. What are the qualifications for support? What are the other support and what are the qualifications? Is it only reduced in free lunch? Because if you have two athletes that are doing three sports in a split household, can the split household, and Gridiron Club is four hundred bucks just to the booster club per athlete per year that athletes have not paid, but we fundraise, and I'm pointing to Charles because, you know, super volunteer, warrior one, okay, but you know, so there's a lot of other factors that Deb brought up. It's not just about free and reduced lunches. It's about all the family situations and now our well-off families. Yeah, they might be unhappy about it, but there's probably a huge chunk in between that are gonna be affected differently. So what are the supports and what are qualifications?
The Waldron Fund doesn't have any sort of a free and reduced requirement or anything like that. The Waldron Fund really is limited by the number of requests they get and the number of people who donate. So the more we can encourage, you know, like, every staff member in the building can donate a dollar a paycheck or five dollars a paycheck to the Waldron Fund and participate in it, including us, I'm guessing. As well as people can donate to the fund itself, and that fund is specifically if a parent reaches out and says, I have a need, whether they're in the middle, behind, below, you know, from fees to address for prom to, you know, whatever it might be, the fund will help if they can.
Football is four hundred bucks, the booster club plus your your hundred-dollar fee, plus the shoes and whatever else, helmets are four hundred bucks a piece that the booster club is buying. We're buying batting cages as a booster club. None of that's in the normal budget, so that's the point of the booster club.
So that answered my question from earlier, so thank you. Because if we can free the booster club up from having to pay for the day-to-day expenses.
And we've gotten coach buses when the busing was messed up, too, for for both of those teams.
Underlying.
But you have students that are paying that for football, then you have a student that's in hockey too, which a stick is eight hundred bucks. If you get a good stick, I guess, you know, this is not.
Yeah, the Wausau West Gridiron does have a break. If you've got two students in it, then then the fee is reduced. You're not paying the same participation fee. Right now for football, it is, it's not two times, it's like one, one times, one point X times. But you know, you look at it, I know you were struggling because in two thousand and one, the average cost of a high-end football plead was seventy dollars. Today, that's a hundred and sixty. I mean, and then that's gonna fall on the the sports and athletic. I mean, the same thing, look at tennis rackets. They're not, they haven't gotten cheaper, they've gone up quite a bit, and the technology's incredible, but everything has gone up, so.
I think, so I support this, but I just hope that people understand that support doesn't mean that I like it. Sometimes we have to vote in favor of something that we don't like because we feel like it's a necessity. And when we look at, in the last eleven years adjusted for inflation, we're fifty-eight million dollars down in funding from the state. We're ten or thirteen million dollars down just last year from the state. So as long as the whole state taxpayer system funding is going down, we're going to have to put more burden on our local users, our local families. I don't like that, but that is just the reality of what we're going to have to do. The other point I want to make is. The other point I want to make is, when we talk about opportunities, I'm also worried about opportunities for students, I never want finances to be a barrier. This is probably a little bit too far off tangent, but one of the biggest financial barriers for students in athletics isn't the user fee when they get to high school. It's what's happened before high school ever came about because of club sports and traveling sports that they couldn't take part of. So if you want to increase opportunities for low-income students in athletics, you expand the middle school program and make it free for them. That's where you catch them, because by the time they're in high school, they don't want to go out for a sport and compete against a kid who's been playing travel ball for five years. And then the other point on opportunities is, my worry for opportunities is if we don't do this, is we're going to have to take things away. And so that's one of the biggest ways you save costs in your athletic department is you take away sports, you consolidate. And my worry is, and we've taken away some things along the way, I don't think parents now, or maybe parents now know because now they're old like me and they did when they were younger, but the things that we don't have now that we used to have when I was a student athlete, I mean, I used to have an activities bus to take me home after school because I didn't have a ride home. So now we don't have that, so what happens if you don't have a ride home, you don't get to play? But we can't afford that anymore, so we've taken things like that away. And I'm afraid that if we don't make changes like this, we're just going to take more away, so that opportunity argument works both ways.
I'm going to, because this is a very sensitive topic. And I hear the argument that you're putting forth, Lance, and I appreciate it. I'm looking at some of the other comments that have been brought forth, the fact that you have multiple students in your family, multiple athletics that they're going into. I see it happening, but I don't think we've put enough time into it. I don't think we have really evaluated some options here, and I'm a little concerned about that. I'm looking at not amending this motion, but postponing this motion. Because I'd like to give you guys some more time to really peruse some of the things we've talked about here. Because it does put stress on the booster clubs. Booster clubs are asked to bring up more money, sometimes booster clubs in some school districts, they're paying for a multitude of helmets in football. Multitude of padding for goalies and that, they're doing a lot of that, so I don't, I think we need to look at the whole picture and not just the activity fees and that. And so with that, I'm going to take a pause before I go any further. John, go ahead.
Well, just as part of that, and I would agree with probably postponing this for a little more information, but one big thing would be, and I didn't see in your presentation, but do any other districts do that with multiple kids? I've got three playing sports right now, you know, so is there, do any other districts offer, you know, if I've got two or three kids in high school at once, you know, is there a reduced rate or, you know, some sort of break? Because that would probably provide a pretty healthy amount of alleviation even if we do increase fees or there is some sort of, some sort of break for having multiple kids.
I think the multiple kids and multiple sports programs and the multiple activities they may be involved with, I think needs to be looked at. That's why I'm kind of putting a, well, let's wait on it. You're talking about, they go for three sports, they only pay for two. Well, that's fine if you only have one athlete in the, at high school level, but now, like I said, I gave that already.
Do we need an out-of-pocket max? For participation in activities? I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
There's a single child, or there's an out-of-pocket family max between everything that they participate in.
You bring up a good point, Sarah.
Rather than having this breakdown, I don't want to make it more complicated.
But that is, that is what some schools have done. And some schools, I'm talking about in different areas that have had big activity fees. They realize that, okay, there's a limit, it can go no higher than that. But what is that limit? I mean, there are some thoughts here, I think, that we're bringing up, that I think we need to go back and let the athletic directors do their job in figuring out what they really need. How much do we need to go up? Let you two do your job and figure out, okay, can we put a limit here and all that? Instead of us giving you all these ideas, I think we have concerns. Your ideas and then working on it will take care of our concerns as we move forward for the benefit of our families. And I'm talking about whole families that have multiple students at our buildings, I'm a little concerned for them.
Are we up against a time limit or anything?
As opposed to the other fees and motions tonight, we have a little more leeway on this one. We need to, we really need to have our courses approved and our course fees approved going into registration. Just going to have them January-ish. But no, we have some time, so.
And I like how we split the motions up because it gives us, I knew this was going to be a big discussion point. I knew that would spend some time with us, matter of fact, and I had concerns about it. So I'm going to put a motion to the table right now.
My point was going to be, is it, is the correct procedure for me to withdraw the motion?
No, you can't.
No, we can't do that.
So we have to vote it up or not down?
No, we can.
Actually, we got to go postpone, and then we go to the motion that was put on the table, and we would vote no on that. So the postponement would be a yes, and then it would be, because you always go in reverse. You're my new parliamentarian.
I'll drive you really crazy and say this is a small board, and so I'm a Robert for a small board.
Alright, we're going to have an argument on it.
We can pretty much do what we want, we can even, but.
And I get concerned about that.
But if you don't want to follow the small board rules, we can be a little more formal. I don't think we need to re-vote on them, on the original motion if we're not amending it.
There's no vote.
Because if we're postponing the motion, we don't have to go back and vote on the original one, so.
That's correct.
So let's do it.
That's why I was saying to begin with, the postponement would be all the further we would have to go. If we need to clean it up even more so, we could vote it down. So what's, I'm putting a motion on the floor to postpone this topic.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we have postponed this, a postponement is different in the fact that we can bring this forward at any time based on when you want to bring it forward.
Okay.
Okay, and that's why I called it a postponement.
And just so I can recap to make sure I'm my direction right, something of an out-of-pocket family maximum for the fee increase, and then more clarification on free and reduced lunch process qualifications.
How we can communicate with families, how we can get that information, how we can connect the dots.
Can we pass that information on? That's the biggest question there, I think.
And I would be, just one board member, more worried about the family caps for free and reduced families than I am for John. Because, but seriously, if you think about, if you think what you get for a hundred dollars, take one lesson or have coaching lessons five days a week with game and travel, it's, for the families who can afford it, it is a bargain. For the families who can't afford it, it can be a barrier, and so that's where I think our focus needs to be, not on John.
John, I do appreciate your position because I fought that battle as well with three. So with that, okay, thank you, gentlemen, appreciate that, postponement that's taking place. Alright, eleven D, course approval. This item was brought forward at the October Education Operations Committee meeting. And we've already discussed it, I don't think there's any more information on that, okay? I'm seeking a motion for approval of Art Foundation One, Art Foundations Two, and Serve Safe to the District High School Course Catalog for the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school year.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Agenda item twelve, Board Member Professional Growth and Development Report. Any board member here want to share any professional development that you have gone through at this point?
I can say in the short time being on the board, it's been an incredible month. I've met here with Elizabeth here at the Montessori, and also the great people over at the Lincoln 4K. They've been fantastic to work with, the facilities are incredible. What they're doing for student learning is great. If you take a tour of this building, you'll see exactly everything that that referendum brought, and it's absolutely stunning. I have to say, they just did a great job. We've all attended, a good number of us, the WASP meetings, and saw you re-elected, which is pretty positive. The amount of interaction that we had and attainment was very, very positive, and I thought the sessions were incredible. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you. Any other comments? Well, I'll add a couple, just very quickly. The Legislative Conference in Stevens Point this past Saturday was a very interesting and very informative conference. I sat at a table with four other board members from four other districts, and I am becoming very happy to say that board members are becoming more in tune to budgets than ever before. I mean, people understanding educational budgets. And I appreciate this board very specifically on the fact that you have spent a lot of time increasing your knowledge on budgets and policies and things of that fashion, where we have shared that among ourselves to help us do a better job in our job and what we do here. So I just want to thank you for all the work that you've been putting forth. The Fall Meeting was last Tuesday for Region Five. I was very happy to see four of us were there, and over ninety board members from Region Five, that's thirty-four districts, showed up for the dinner, and that was the largest number of board members at any of the fifteen regions. We were the last region to meet, and we were the largest attendance, and I thought that was very impressive of Central Wisconsin and all the board members that are working there. And I was very happy to see the number of board members on our board. Last year, we had six board members that received awards at different levels for their work, your work, our work, and doing better jobs and working harder at what we do. Six last year, we had six this year move up a level, and I'm very proud of all of you that have done that. And I think I'm going to stop there because that would give you an opportunity when you take over at your point. So with that, thank you, and Mr. Sillars?
Corey, do you want to? Actually, since you had a legislative conference, you might have more, more current comments than I would.
Well, COSBA, that's the organization that Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and don't ask me the acronym because I would have a hard time coming up with the COSBA. NHS was a lot easier, NHSB was a lot easier to identify. But we had a person from COSBA come and talk about what's happening in the country educationally, and he did a very good job putting it all to neutral, not getting into politics or anything like that, about what we're going to be doing. We have twenty-six states that are involved with COSBA, the national organization. Twenty-six states are involved with them, twenty-four are involved with NSBA, the National School Board Association. So right now, it's kind of split in the country which association you're with and that. And again, I don't care to get into politics because that's not where we're at. We're at where we want to do things for education purposes. So he went down the road of all the different things that COSBA was doing because the state of Wisconsin is involved with COSBA. I don't, there were some people that were not happy with what he had to say and what he didn't say. You're going to get that in those situations, and it's a learning process. And so from that point of view, I thought it was a very good opening legislative presentation. There were five other, four other presentations that were touched on and nothing from the state per se. You know, so if you have anything from the state or local.
Yeah, I don't have any new updates on any of the work that is being done in the legislature right now.
One legislative update would be the cell phone restriction.
That's a big one, yeah.
But since our schools already prevent the use of cell phones during instructional time, it doesn't really change anything for our practice, but it will change our policy. I assume that Niola will probably come up with a policy for us to adopt that will cover it. Okay.
Yeah, it's interesting you bring that one up. There was a lot of discussion that did take place at different tables about the cell phone situation. It's already been identified for us, so it's a matter of how we locally are going to be dealing with it with policy. So we'll pass that over to you. So with that, then, I'm going to pass it on to Kale.
Alright, I've got a few comments. With Veteran Day being tomorrow, I would just want to send a special thank you to all our veterans and active members from all branches of our armed forces. On behalf of our district, I give you a heartfelt thank you for your service to our country. Additionally, I'd like to share a special thank you with all of our students who will be entering into the armed forces following this school year. Thank you for protecting us, we know that you'll make Wausau proud. I'd also like to say congratulations to our own board president, Mr. Boucher. President Boucher was recently selected as Region Five Director for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or WASB, this past week. Congratulations, President Boucher. I'd also like to recognize that at that annual meeting for WASB, multiple members of our board were recognized for their service on our school board as members of WASB. Thank you to all of you for your work in making the Wausau School District a great place to be. Finally, I'd like to mention that next week is American Education Week. Time for us to celebrate public education and show appreciation for all of our school employees, including teachers, support staff, pupil service staff, administrators, custodial staff, maintenance staff, cafeteria or nutrition workers. We are fortunate to live in a community and district with outstanding people who make our student experience amazing. This concludes my comments.
Thank you very much, greatly appreciate your comments. I would like to put the written board member lay a sign, district activity report into the books, appreciate that. And I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Dr. Phelps will be giving tours, of course, man, if you're interested, as will.